Welcome to Select Board Meeting, April 2nd, 2024. Please join the board in the Pledge to the Flag.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Canty, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Pursuant to modifications made to the open meeting law by the Legislature of the Commonwealth, this meeting is taking place in a hybrid format. We have members of the Select Board joining us physically in person. We may have members of the Select Board joining us virtually over the Zoom webinar platform. Members of the public who wish to observe or participate in this meeting may do so through Zoom. On the agenda on the town website is posted the Zoom login information. They may do so by joining us physically at 26 Court Street here at the Great Hall, or they may do so to observe the meeting by watching us on Comcast Channel 9 or Verizon Channel 47. Mr. Chairman, if there's no other business before us, I would read the executive session language.
Please.
The Select Board will hold an executive session pursuant to Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 30A, Section 21A, Clause 3, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the public body, and the Chair so declares. And this is in relation to a collective bargaining update on the various unions we are negotiating with. Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion that we enter into executive session at this time.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Mr. Canty?
Yes.
Mr. Blitzer?
Yes.
And myself, yes. The Board will be returning at approximately 6:00 PM. Thank you. Welcome back, everyone. First item on the agenda is public hearing for Farmer Brewery Pouring Permit Mayflower Brewing Company, Village Green North, Andrew Bresso, manager. Mr. Canty?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. In accordance with Chapter 138 of the Massachusetts General Laws, as amended, notice is hereby given that a public hearing will be held at the Plymouth Town Hall, 26 Court Street, on Tuesday, April 2nd, 2024, at approximately 6:00 PM to consider the application for a new Farmer Brewery pouring permit from Mayflower Brewing Company LLC, doing business as Mayflower Brewing Company. Zero Village Green North, Andrew Bresso, manager. Description of premises is as follows. Outdoor beer garden is roughly 0.5 acres. The area is cordoned off with ropes and signs indicating the alcohol boundary that includes tables and chairs, fire pit, musician stage, and gravel slash grass areas for sitting or standing. Seating capacity is 50; total capacity is 300. Two entrances and exits into cordoned off area. Two shipping containers, 156 square feet approximately, that provide cold storage for the beer and bar room with which to serve. The containers are for staff only. Anyone wishing to be heard on this matter should plan to attend this meeting.
Thank you. Now declare the hearing open. Anyone wishing to speak in favor of this application? Come on up. Identify yourself for the record and make sure the green light's on on the microphone, please, right up here.
Sorry. Good evening. I'm Andrew Broswell, the president of Mayflower Brewing Company. Just some background information. We're following the ABCC guidelines in submission of this application to replace a series of one-day pouring permits that we were using in the past several years for this beer garden in the Pine Hills. Beyond that, there's no changes to how it's functioning or anything else associated with it, and we hope you approve. That's it.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor of this? Well, we're gonna wait till we come back to it, Charlie. Please. Is there anybody online who wanna ask questions or speak in favor? Seeing no one, anyone wanna speak in opposition to this application? Now I'll bring it back to the Board for questions. Mr. Blitzer?
Yeah, Andrew, I just have a question. So the same thing you've been doing every year up there, and there's no difference except that it's a seasonal license.
Uh, yeah, they were, uh, the ABCC changed the way this was being done within the state, and so they needed us to apply for, create a brewing license at that facility and a pouring permit on top of that.
Which I agree to. I agree that instead of doing all those one-day permits, so, but it's the same, nothing's changed with the structure.
Operationally, exactly the same.
Exactly the same. And everybody, the butters, everybody's happy with you. All the merchants up there are happy and...
Yeah, we're bringing them business.
Exactly. Yeah, I've talked to some of them, so, so good. I wish you well and good luck. Okay, thanks.
Appreciate it.
Any other, Mr. Mahoney?
Drew, so you're transitioning to this blanket permission. So does that mean, are you, is it seven days a week now?
No.
Okay, so what's the schedule gonna look like?
So the agreement with the, the days that were open are driven by, it could be seven days a week, but the agreement we have with the Pine Hills community and the Pine Hills management is that it's open Saturdays and Sundays and some Fridays. And it's starting Memorial Day weekend and will be ending beginning of October. And there might be, from time to time, a additional Monday, like a Memorial Day.
Or Labor Day or something like that?
Yeah. And so it's, but it's really that. It's not gonna be, certainly not seven days a week and really...
But right now, right now, Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday are completely out.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments from the Board?
And Mon, well, yeah, that's right.
Did you wanna say something else?
No, no, I was thinking Mondays, but the occasional Monday, right, yeah.
Okay, thank you. Gonna close the hearing and bring it back to the Board.
Second?
Motion by Ms. Mahoney, second by Mr. Canty. Discussion. Mr. Blitzer?
I vote yes.
Mr. Helm?
Yes.
Mr. Canty?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Thank you. Moving on to licenses and administrative notes. Any questions or comments or any special requests?
What's that, licenses? Yes, I have a question on, uh, three piece standby.
If I could bring Mr. Viscarella up. Hey, Michael, I see under, you're applying for a, as far as entertainment goes, it says solo or duo or recorded music. I'd like to, I'd like to amend that license. I think you probably agree to doing live entertainment or recorded.
Correct.
Because I know you're gonna, you have a three-piece that you're gonna be using, I think, this summer on the weekends, so I didn't wanna handcuff you and have somebody call you on this.
Yeah, no, definitely have, you know, two or three-piece bands down there. I want a little more flexibility.
Yeah, so this says solo or duo, so I think if we change it, Mr. Chairman, if we could amend that, I'll make a motion to amend it to live entertainment or recorded music. That way, if you got a trio or if you, if you wanna put a steel band out there or something like that, it's not gonna handcuff yourself, you know, something that's appropriate, you know, for that venue. And I know a lot of people are excited about the oldies band coming down on the weekends, so, but that's it, so I'll make that, I will make that motion if it's okay.
Sounds good to me.
Okay, that's it. Thanks.
Oh, my only question is, can we do that without him refiling or is it something he has to, with paperwork?
I talked to Lisa Johnson, and she said to, you could do it during the open meeting, just amend it to, to say, instead of solo or duo, say, live entertainment or recorded music, and that will, that will cover it, and then she'll change the license, so.
Question answered, I guess. Thank you. Any questions from the Board on this one? I would only ask that, you're in an area where you have a lot of tenants now, so just keep it so that they, you know, they're happy, as best you can, and if not, then we'll have to address that, but I wish you well. I don't have an issue with it going into it, long as you be respectful of them, Michael, that's all. Yeah.
Good luck.
All right, so we have a motion to amend it. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Canty. Discussion. Mr. Canty?
So I agree with the amendment, and I would just also say, for anybody watching, this is something that didn't come to the Chair's attention within 48 hours, so it's something that, even though it's not on the agenda, is permissible because it was unexpected and I anticipate it, and it's a relatively minor change. Made consistent with the recommendation of the licensing agent.
Any other discussion? So we have a first and a second, and that was our discussion. Mr. Blitzer?
I vote yes.
Mr. Helm?
Yes.
Mr. Canty?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Thank you. Okay.
So if there's no other questions as to the licenses, I would make a motion to move all the licenses, including the one we just amended as a group for approval.
I'll second that motion.
First by Mr. Canty, second by Mr. Blitzer. Discussion. Seeing none, Mr. Blitzer?
I vote yes.
Mr. Helm?
Yes.
Mr. Canty?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Thank you. Four administrative notes. If there's no questions or comments, we take them as a group.
I move we take, we pass these as a group.
I'll second.
Motion by Mr. Helm, second by Mr. Canty. Discussion. Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Mr. Canty?
Yes.
Mr. Helm?
Yes.
Mr. Blitzer?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Administrative notes unanimous. Agenda items: Health and Human Services, Public Health Week, programs, and proclamation. Mrs. Braddy?
Yes.
Welcome.
Thank you so much, as always, for having us. Health and Human Services represented this evening. We just wanted to give you some updates and talk about a proclamation. Just wanna thank the divisions for being here. We've got Maureen, Roxanne, Karen, Ann, Consultant Jay Gardner, and Assistant Commissioner Emily Wilson behind me, so, thank you. And the goodies that you have in front of you for National Public Health Week are courtesy of the Public Health Division. That is all Karen Keane right there and her staff, so we truly appreciate that, Karen. We like to bribe people with goodies. So, Health and Human Services, thank you for being the bridge to, we're gonna start and just give you some updates. Of course, we are the bridge to resources in our hometown, and just wanna give you a few spotlight items tonight. And basically, we wanna let you know of something very exciting. We put in front of you a hot-off-the-press, literally, no pun intended. We have changed our name. You know, it was formerly Plymouth Opioid Remediation Project, and it just sounded boring and it didn't have a punch, so it is now called Plymouth Arise, and we have risen. It is, stands for Plymouth Addiction Response and Improvement Strategies Effort. That is what we aim to do over the next 15 or so years as we roll out the opioid funding. So we're excited, and that press release in front of you that was released today to announce that, congratulate our Arise grantees. Bay State Community Services, Brockton Area Multi-Service Incorporated, known as BAMZI, High Point Treatment Center, Plymouth Public Schools, and To the Moon and Back are all recipients, pending contract approval, of course, of opioid settlement money that is going to be given back to our community. Roughly $250,000 will be going out to these local amazing organizations to help, hopefully, eradicate this in our community. I wanted just duly noted quickly that the state has strategies, as we had discussed previously, that they would like to see these monies used for. Out of those five awardees, six out of the seven strategies were covered, and we're super excited about that. It's the goal of HHS to support each one in our service community, although it is not required, it is our goal. We, as a result of six out of seven, we will be focusing on number five and Needs of Criminal Justice Involved Future Project, so stay tuned on that. Okay, so next, we want to congratulate, this is National Public Health Week. I'll wait for the applause. National Public Health Week has come to Plymouth. Harry, you're excited by this, I can tell. Okay. We are thrilled to announce our participation in National Public Health Week, began Monday, April 1st, and runs through Sunday, April 7th. This year's theme is Protecting, Connecting, and Thriving. We are all public health. Each year for National Public Health Week, the American Public Health Association, APHA, convenes a network of local, state, and national partners to observe a week-long series of events that recognize the contributions of public health and highlight issues critical to improving our nation's health. So pleased to announce that this year Plymouth HHS has been formally designated by APHA as a local health partner. Big news. So we are all public health. We received that formal declaration, and just so you can see, this is what the spotlight schedule on all social media and outlets have gone. This is National Public Health Week. Each division lists, it's in your packet, each division, each day, highlights a program or something unique in terms of public health. What I really wanna point out is, we talked so much, and when our town manager wanted to create this department, about unity. When you see that grid, you really see the five divisions come together under one roof, truly, for one cause, so it's very, very exciting. And just so you get a little sense, we did a press release on that as well for National Public Health Week. Emily Wilson, our Assistant Commissioner, guru of press releases, did both of those and did an incredible job, both the opioid and this one. You see Plymouth Public Library, you see Health and Wellness for Cow, Town of Plymouth Children, Children's Mental Health Resources under Public Health, not something maybe you think about, but all of these are interrelated to National Public Health Week and highlights those divisions. You just had a little prelude, too. We're just, we're just prepping, chief. So Recreation Division, look at that. Get Out and About with Plymouth Rec. Our director created that. Love what she did with that. Pop-up playground, playgroups. Did you know that rec department does that? Did you know our veterans are looking for volunteers to place the flags? Just amazing what we can do as a group to come together for help. So what we're here tonight, very quickly, we would like to proclaim with your blessing and your vote, we would like a proclamation that has been presented to you of National Public Health Week in Plymouth. It is always the first week in April, so it's currently April 1st to the 7th, and I can, I don't know if you'd like me to read the proclamation, I'm happy to do so. Okay, I would love to read that for you. So the proclamation reads, "2024 National Public Health Week, April 1st to the 7th, 2024. Protecting, Connecting, and Thriving. We are all public health. Whereas, the Town of Plymouth, in conjunction with Plymouth Department of Health and Human Services, is honored to partner with the American Public Health Association to recognize, celebrate, and participate in National Public Health Week during the first week of April 2024 and subsequent years. And whereas Plymouth HHS has been formally designated as a local partner by the American Public Health Association on the National Public Health Week website. And whereas, the mission of Plymouth HHS is to connect people with vital resources within the framework of a healthy, humanistic, sustainable, and resilient community, whose goal is to foster a comprehensive and compassionate social health support system that promotes a culture of belonging and cohesiveness for residents and visitors alike. Whereas since 1995, when the first full week of April was declared National Public Health Week, communities across the United States have observed the time as an opportunity to recognize the contributions of public health and highlight issues that are important to improving the public's health. And whereas, the five divisions of Plymouth HHS, including the Center for Active Living, Plymouth Public Library, Public Health, Recreation, and Veteran Services, are all grounded in the fundamental truth that health is connected by community, and we are stronger when we work in a united manner to lift everyone's well-being. And whereas, the entire HHS department is collectively driven by the idea that good health is shaped by many factors, and we honor with dignity the commitment to serve as the bridge to resources for those in our community. And whereas, the Center for Active Living proudly serves over 15,000 elder community members each year and delivers over 36,000 Meals on Wheels annually to seniors. Whereas last year, the Plymouth Public Library held over 700 programs, circulated over 350,000 items, and welcomed over 174,000 visitors. Whereas the Public Health Division currently serves as the lead coordinated agency for the Regional Public Health Excellence Grant, and in 2023 issued over 2,800 licenses and conducted over 1,200 inspections, investigations, to ensure the health and safety of Plymouth residents and visitors. Whereas, so far in 2024, the Recreation Division has experienced a 13% increase in registrations with more than 3,500 individuals registered for recreation programs that promote physical and mental health within the first three months of this year. And whereas, during the month of February 2024 alone, the Veteran Services Division fielded 1,100 phone calls with our most deserving veterans. Now therefore, the Plymouth Select Board, by virtue of their authority and in recognition of the critical importance of this endeavor, do hereby proclaim the first week in April as Public Health Week in Plymouth, Mass. Additionally, we encourage all community residents to participate in the diverse portfolio of programs designed to help improve the quality of life in Plymouth, America's hometown." Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any questions or comments from the Board? Seeing none, do I have a motion?
I'd make a motion that we proclaim the first week in April as Public Health Week.
I'll second that.
Motion by Mr. Canty, second by Mr. Helm. Discussion. Mr. Blitzer?
I vote yes.
Mr. Helm?
Yes.
Mr. Canty?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
And myself, yes.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Good job. Plymouth Police Department Operations and Data Analysis Report. You got a tough act to follow, chief.
I've been meaning to speak with you about the agenda lineup. She's a tough act to follow, you see. I should have Craig Junginger waiting to come on. He was the lead consultant for our study. There he is. Good evening, gentlemen. One, among many of the goals that I wished to accomplish when I was first appointed chief was to have a professional study done of the police department. The intent of the study was to determine whether the department is currently functioning appropriately to provide the best possible services to the community. In addition, I wanted to hear, to the extent as possible, what we could do to prepare for the future growth of the Town of Plymouth. At the fiscal '24 Spring Town Meeting, I received funding and immediately began the process of locating a vendor to conduct the study. In the end, we were able to contract with the Center for Public Safety Management, led by retired police chief Craig Junginger of the Gresham, Oregon Police Department. His team began the evaluation of the department in, I believe, late summer, which included interview, interviews with the various members of the department, policy and directive reviews, and a tour of our facility and the community. The study was completed just after the first of this year, and I'll turn it over to him to give his presentation.
Thank you.
Good evening, Board. My name's Craig Junginger. I'm a senior manager with the Center for Public Safety Management. Our company throughout the years have conducted over 300 of these department assessments, from a department as small as 10 officers in Minnesota to a department as large as 5,500 officers in the state of Texas. Next slide, please. So the people assigned to this project, the four of us, between the four of us, we're all retired police executives. We have over 100 years of policing experience, with about 30 of those years being police chiefs in mid-to-large-size organizations here in the United States. Next slide, please. So our methodology on how we conduct these assessments are the same for every agency, whether it's a large agency or a small agency. We approach them the same way. It all begins with the data, and we're a data-driven company that bases our interpretation of the data when we make our recommendations. The data that we looked at was from July 1, 2022, through June 30, 2023. Included in that, as the chief said, was a site visit for two days in the PD, and during those two days, we conducted focus groups with sworn and civilian staff and supervisor and line-level employees. We also reviewed documents and did operational and administrative observations of the organization. Next slide. So some of the general observations that we, as the consultants, saw during our visit and after talking to people, we found that the department's employees truly like working for the agency because it makes them feel like family. They all seem to get along. The police chief is well-respected and well-liked. Employees in all of the groups stated they liked the direction the department was headed. Some of the things that we found, the department should take advantage of technological advances across mobile platforms. A lot of what's going on in law enforcement now is technology-driven. We found that the department needs a restructuring in several areas to be more effective and efficient. There's numerous opportunities in the department to civilianize positions that are now being done by sworn personnel, meaning police officers. We found that in the future, the town's population is gonna grow, and with that will present challenges for the PD into the future, and that the department must move forward with implementing the body-worn cameras and the vehicle cameras. Next slide, please. So our report was 185 pages, and I must emphasize that this report is not a fix-all for the department. What we say is that it can be used as a roadmap to making the agency more efficient and more effective in the way that it operates. With this report, there's 110 recommendations. Some, but not all, will be covered in this presentation. They range from simple, operational, or procedural, to long-term human resource and to long-term human resource and capital investments, which means that they can simply... One of the recommendations may require simply a signature from the chief to change a unit to another division, or it can be additional personnel or technology. Some recommendations are general and call for research and deliberation, say, technology, addition of personnel, things like that. And some recommendations may work in one community or one department, but not in a different community or different department, which means we may make a recommendation that either by the will of the chief, the board, the community, either will or will not allow that recommendation to be done. And I'll give you one example. We often recommend that police agencies don't respond to non-injury traffic accidents because, in the end of the day, most of them are insurance issues. However, there's communities that don't want that. They believe that if their citizens are involved in a traffic accident, sometimes that's the most traumatic thing that they've had involved in, and they want a police officer. Also, most of our recommendations are based on data, legal considerations, and best practices in law enforcement. Next slide, please. So one of our recommendations was to adopt a new organizational chart, which included a deputy chief rank. The purpose of that is that it streamlines communication to the chief, that the two captains are reporting to the deputy chief, who then reports to the chief. Many departments, for example, like mine, I created a deputy chief position because I needed to be out in the community more, and I needed someone to handle more of the day-to-day operation of the police department. So at the end of the day, we looked at it, and we're proposing that the department adopt this organizational chart, which includes a deputy chief rank. Next slide, please. We also recommend that they develop a succession plan to identify tomorrow's leaders. Next to recruitment and retention, identifying the leaders of tomorrow is one of the biggest issues plaguing law enforcement right now. Our leaders are leaving earlier, not spending as much time in rank because of the pressures or whatever it may be. So it's important for a department to try to identify the people that are going to be the leaders of tomorrow and to begin to train them, mentor, and develop those people. The department should also look at creating a three-to-five-year strategic plan, which is basically showing the department which way the boat's going to be rowing into the future. Next slide, please. So when we look at patrol staffing, which is one of the primary things that most of our clients want to know, do we have enough police officers? Police patrol is basically the backbone of American policing. It's the most recognizable with officers being seen driving down the street in a marked police unit. What we look at is what activities do the officers currently perform, and what are activities that they should be performing? How many officers are necessary to do that? And how should they be deployed, or how should they not be deployed within the agency? Next slide, please. So our department, or our company, when we look at staffing, we use the Rule of Sixty. There's two parts in the Rule of Sixty. However, I want to point out that one of the myths that's been around for as long as I was in law enforcement, which was forty years, was that number of officers should be per one thousand population, meaning one officer per a thousand population. We found that this is not the best method to determine staffing in a police department. So the two parts, part one is the ratio of patrol. We believe that sixty percent of sworn officers in the department should be assigned to patrol, and that forty percent should be assigned to investigations, specialty assignments, internal affairs, things like that. At the time of the report, Plymouth Police Department had a hundred and three positions assigned to patrol, or eighty-one percent of their sworn personnel. So they definitely met the part one of the Rule of Sixty. The second part is that sixty percent of the time of those officers assigned to patrol should be spent, or sixty percent, no more than sixty percent of the time, should be responding to calls or doing their own proactive enforcement. Forty percent of their time should be discretionary time. When we looked at your department, obviously, like I said, we're data-driven, the workload of the officers never exceeded forty percent. When you get above forty percent, you're starting to look at officers responding to more calls than having discretionary time. And once you get to fifty, sixty percent, officers are basically, patrol is becoming stressed, and they're responding from call to call to call. Currently, that's not an issue with Plymouth Police Department. However, there is a caveat that when we looked at workload for your police department, your current record management system does not allow for the tracking of time spent on report-writing, in-house training, admin work, breaks, such as that. So when you look at the chart that I'll show in just a few minutes, where the workload, the total workload is, it's going to be considerably higher than that because the system doesn't track those things. We just can't say how much higher that workload is going to be. So when I talk about forty percent of the time discretionary time, that's time that's used for proactive enforcement, citizen engagement, things of that nature. Next slide, please. So this is the chart that I just spoke about, and this is from summer twenty-twenty-two, and it's a weekday. We looked at the average of the weekdays. And the busiest portion of the day begins about nine AM and continues about midnight. The green line is the total workload of the police officers during the day. So you could see at about eleven AM through, I don't know, maybe nine o'clock PM, the officer's workload is between thirty and forty percent on average. The yellow one is the community-initiated work, and that's the radio calls that they respond to. So as I said previously, their workload, that green line, may be higher. It may reach up to the forty percent or even more sometimes during the day, but we just don't know that because of the system doesn't track report-writing time, booking evidence, things of that nature. Next slide, please. So in operations, which is basically the patrol part of the police department, there's, we recommend that they create civilian positions to take the cold calls that are being given to the police officers now. Say, for example, a burglary where there's no suspects, a theft report where there's no suspects, things like that. We also recommend that patrol officers be allocated from patrol to create a crime-impact team. That team would look at areas in the city that are becoming problematic or that are problematic and find solutions to reduce the crime. Excuse me. We also believe that some of the work being conducted by sergeants needs to be given to subordinates. For example, jail bookings, the chemical testing for drunk drivers, things like that. The reason for that is you want sergeants out there focusing on supervising the officers. One of the, there's two primary things that police departments enter into litigation over, and one of them is failure to supervise. So you want your sergeants out there doing supervision instead of inside the station booking arrestees. We also recommend that the department find and work with a third-party vendor to develop an online reporting system. That's so a citizen can merely get online, fill out a crime report, whether it meets certain requirements, and then the report will be approved by a police officer, and a case number will be generated. This is, most police departments we've studied all have some type of online reporting system. We also recommend that the department conduct a yearly performance review on each of their employees to hold them accountable, and that we recommend that the department reallocate four officers and one sergeant from patrol to create a full-time traffic unit. Almost every agency that we've studied, whether it's large or small, one of the biggest issues within an agency is the safe flow of traffic within the city. Some cities are worse than others, but it's usually the number-one thing. And if you ask the citizens in the community, that's usually their number-one item. Next slide, please. So we took a look at the Harbor Master Division, and that was an interesting one. But we recommend the Harbor Master be located in the Operations Division and report to the Operations Captain. We know that's changed, you know, different ways over the years, but that's the way that we recommend that it be operated. We also recommend that the city, or the town, conduct a salary study for seasonal employees to maintain and to retain those employees. Make sure that their pay is commensurate with other neighboring agencies that are all competing for the same people. And lastly, continue using available grant funding to purchase the vessels. Next slide, please. So one of the things that I always speak about when I do presentations is the response times. Response time is the time from when a citizen picks up the phone until a police officer gets to their location or knocks on their door. Response times have two parts. One is the dispatch portion, the time when the citizen calls in, the phone is answered, until the time that the call is dispatched. That's the dispatch time. Dispatch means sent to the officer or relayed to them over the radio. The next part is the travel, which, that's from the time the officer receives a call until they arrive at the location. Out of the two parts, travel is the one that sometimes there's no way to really make that quicker because there's times that officers may be close to a location where the call is being generated, or they may be farther away. It may be certain times of the day when traffic's heavier than other times. The dispatch area is the one that some focus can be given to to reduce that time. And as you can see, some of the, some of the times, most of them are within the two-to-three-minute range. For most agencies that we've studied, we like to see the dispatch time between one to one and a half minutes that it's being dispatched. Now, we know that you recently contracted with the Sheriff's Department to do your dispatching, so hopefully those numbers will come down with the advent of contracting with the Sheriff's Department. Next slide, please. So as I said, there's two major parts in a police organization, the patrol and then criminal investigations. So when we took a look at your Criminal Investigations Division, our recommendations are that the department should consider a detective rotation schedule of three to five years. Add a sergeant position to Criminal Investigations to increase the span of control. Span of control is how many people does a supervisor supervise? And we found that in CID, if there was an added sergeant position, it would be one to seven-point-five detectives. Usually, the span of control in law enforcement that's recommended is one to six, but adding a sergeant will get that close. We recommend that the department include detectives in the Body-Worn Camera Implementation Program, that the collaboration with the Co-Response/Clinician Program, we believe it's unique, and it should be acknowledged as that and as a national best practice. We highly recommend that the department continue with that program. The department should also develop a database to track cases assigned to the investigators and to add a full-time civilian crime analyst to its current staff. Crime analysts can take data and provide information to the officers where crime is occurring. We also recommend that detectives be assigned as specialists to violent and major crimes. If detectives are investigating things such as sex crimes or a homicide, things like that, those types of investigations require a lot of expertise and tenure to become very good at solving them. So we recommend that, instead of just being assigned as specialists, that they are specialists in violent and major crimes. Next slide, please. When, I mentioned earlier that there's two things that law enforcement departments are being litigated, and one of them was failure to supervise, the other one is the failure to train their personnel. We recommend that the executive staff at the police department should attend professional training to continue their development, similar to the FBI National Academy, executive training such as that. The department should purchase a training management program or system to properly track the training that they're issuing to the officers and to develop and utilize a twelve-month master training calendar so that the department has a listed schedule of training throughout the year. When it comes time to litigate these cases for failure to train, all of this stuff is going to bolster the city's ability to provide a defense that they're a well-trained organization. We also recommend that the department conduct a training needs assessment of all of its employees. Next slide, please. We always recommend in our studies that departments become accredited. And accreditation is a voluntary process based on standards reflective of best practices in law enforcement. Now, the Plymouth Police Department received accreditation through the Massachusetts Police Accreditation Commission in twenty-nineteen and reaccredited in twenty-twenty-two. If you're not familiar with accreditation, it's a huge task that takes a lot of time and effort by the department. But if you receive accreditation, it shows that you are acting with best practices in law enforcement in almost every part of the agency. However, we found that the person doing the accreditation in the department is a sergeant, and almost all studies that we've done, we recommend that that is a civilianized position, that the accreditation manager does not need to be a sworn position. We also recommend that the agency seek commission on accreditation for law enforcement agencies accreditation, which is Kalia, which is probably the top accreditation a police department can receive in the United States. And once they've received state acc- And once they've received state accreditation, moving forward with the national accreditation sometimes doesn't take that much more time and effort on the department's part. We also recommend that the department purchase a policy manual and procedure manual from a company that makes those policy and procedure manuals based upon legal changes or best practices in law enforcement. They're updated monthly with new case law, and it's easy to adapt it to the department's way that they operate. Next slide, please. So, one of the most important areas in a police department is internal affairs, and that's because that's the part of the organization that is holding the other members of the department accountable to doing their jobs per policy and per procedure. So we recommend that the captain be a lieutenant position that directly reports to the chief involving internal affairs, which is usually employee misconduct investigations. That all department personnel conducting IA investigations attend specialized IA training, internal affairs training. We also recommend that the department look at creating an early intervention program for not only internal affairs, but also use of force. What an early intervention program is that based upon thresholds, say for example, if somebody receives two internal affairs complaints within a year, the first step may be counseling with their supervisor. If they receive another complaint, it may elevate to counseling with a captain and additional training, and so on and so forth. We also recommend that every interview during an internal affairs investigation be recorded and that the complaint form is easily accessible without having to speak to a supervisor, meaning have it online, have it easily, a fillable form to where it can be submitted online as well. Next slide, please. So, as I said, they're in red, property and evidence, one of the highest-risk operations in any law enforcement agencies. I think everyone's probably seen headlines over the years of narcotics being stolen from property rooms, money being taken, property being misappropriated, things like that. So property and evidence is one of those high-risk areas in a police department. We believe that recommending that a civilian property and evidence technician position be created, which would allow the police officer who currently handles property and evidence to be reassigned in the organization to another area. Also install video surveillance for each property room, and that's activated by entry so that there is going to be no doubt who's inside that property room and when they went in. Also ensure that there's a trained backup for the technician when they take a vacation, they're off sick, et cetera. We did find that your property and evidence facility was well-managed regarding the intake and purging of property. And what that means is that we found that your department is doing a very good job of getting rid of as much property as they're taking in. Most departments don't do that, which then creates a problem as far as having enough space for property and evidence. Next slide, please. So one of the things that we look at is police department facilities. When a city, town, whatever, is looking to build a new police facility, you usually want to build a facility that will last for 30 or 40 years because of the cost of creating that facility. So we looked at different ways to make that building more efficient. One of the ways was, we recommend that the front desk be made more secure with maybe bulletproof glass, Kevlar coating in the walls, things like that to protect the people that are behind the counter. Also, the department should consider closing the lobby from 11:00 PM to 8:00 AM. Have a button that would go to communications on the outside of the building to where they could ring someone and talk to someone. Most police departments, the activity, especially in smaller towns or cities, there's usually no one going into a police lobby from 11:00 PM to 8:00 AM. We also believe that what is now being handled by a police officer at the desk position could be a civilian position, and that would be another opportunity to reassign that officer somewhere else in the organization. Next slide, please. I'm sorry, could you go back to the last one? I missed the first one, that I believe at this point the town needs to be looking at how they can increase the size of the department, whether that's adding on, reconfiguring, doing something because as the city continues to grow, which it will in the future, that the needs in the department is going to be, have to be larger. Last slide, please. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to present this report. We put a lot of work into it. We think it will be of value to the organization. So with that, I'll take any questions that you may have.
Thank you. Mr. Canty?
Thank you, and my question is for the, I guess, the consultant or reviewer would be the title.
Consultant.
Okay, consultant. But Chief, if you have anything to add to any of these, feel free to join in. So I guess I have one that kind of kept coming up. I understand some of the civilianizing of certain positions to free up officers to do more, you know, police required work as opposed to work that could be done by a civilian. Some of the specific ones that you mentioned, though, did seem like they would require a certain level of police or police-adjacent training, such as civilianizing the cold case, like for burglary. Like, I imagine that's something like you were away for a weekend, somebody broke into your house sometime over the weekend, you have no idea who it is. That's who you're talking about there. The evidence locker, obviously there's chain of custody issues related to that that would require some type of police or police-adjacent training. So I guess if we're with those types of positions, if we have to train the civilians in a way that's similar to a police academy type of training, is there that much value there, do you see? Or is that maybe not worth the effort there? Could you opine as to that?
Well, I'll use the property and evidence as an example. So you're using a police officer that went through, I'm not sure exactly what the training is in Massachusetts, but here in California where I'm at, a police officer will go through 1,200 hours of training to become a police officer with an additional 40 to 60 hours every year of additional training. A property and evidence technician that's a civilian can be trained easily in a 40-hour course or two-week, an 80-hour course on how to do property and evidence, and then only need maybe a refresher of five to 10 hours every few years by attending a conference or some additional training. So, you know, you spend a lot of money, what most people don't understand, to get a police officer from the date that they're hired or begin the testing until they're a fully functioning solo police officer is usually about $100,000. You want to spend that $100,000 where it gets you the best bang for the buck and use that police officer as a police officer and not booking in property and evidence.
Okay. Another, well, a couple other things. You mentioned on one of the slide Criminal Investigations Division, a detective rotation of three to five years. Do you mean you'd be a detective for, say, five years, and then you'd be transferred to, like, patrol again or to some other? Or so you'd only be a detective for that five-year period, and then you'd be rotated into another completely different area of the department?
Well, what we usually recommend is that there's a rotation in detectives. When a police officer goes into detectives, they learn how to investigate cases, file cases, work through task forces, those types of things. If you have a detective that makes detectives, say, in their 10th year of law enforcement, they could conceivably spend the next 10 to 15 years in that same position. What happens is that people, that officers in patrol, then may not get as many opportunities to work investigations, which, you know, we believe that it's important to widen the breadth of knowledge and experience that a police officer has. And if they're rotated in and out of detectives on a regular basis, then that provides them that additional knowledge and experience that they can now take back and also use in patrol. But one of the main things is that it helps to retain employees, that if somebody comes into the department and is assigned to patrol, that they know that within, you know, maybe every year somebody's rotating out, that there may be an opportunity to go into detectives instead of having to wait many years until somebody retires.
But couldn't it also, if you liked being a detective and you got rotated out, might you want to apply to, say, a local municipality to remain a detective if you didn't want to go back to patrol?
That's always a possibility. But in my agency, you could do the five years in detectives, rotate back to patrol for a year, and then you could put back in for detectives. It doesn't mean that you can't, you can never go back into detectives.
Okay. All right. You mentioned the clinician position and how that was unique. Have you seen anything, I mean, I think it's been very successful. I know in the last year, I think it was, it was 356 different responses, so almost one a day. That's with it being on two shifts. So we're looking, obviously, as part of our budgetary process this time, to increase that so that it's on every shift, which I think will bring benefits to the community. But have you seen anything similar to this in any other department that you've worked with across the country?
Interesting that you bring that up because I did Olympia/Washington about four or five months ago after I did Plymouth, and they have a similar program. It's a little bit different, but similar. You know, a lot of agencies just don't have the funding or the personnel to do this program. But it's one of those innovative programs that we believe, you know, as a police chief, it's a benefit to the organization and to the community. So I think as departments recognize that how effective some of these programs are, say for example, yours, that there, it's going to be sweeping across the country if funding and personnel allow it.
Okay, thank you. And then I have one more. You mentioned, you mentioned reducing, or I guess reorganizing the IA position from captain down to lieutenant. I would think, Chief, correct me if I'm wrong, but I would think the reason that that's a captain is because it's one of the highest rank, it's the highest rank other than the chief in the department, and so it's somebody that's going to be supervising. If you had a lieutenant, they could be, in theory, investigating an IA case where a captain is involved in that case, right? And then an inferior is investigating a superior, right? Which could create some tension. So could you, I guess that's what stands out to me as potentially problematic there, and I wonder if you have a response to that, because I'd like to understand that one.
So most police departments that we've studied, their internal affairs is usually overseen by a lieutenant in smaller organizations, sometimes a sergeant. If, you're right, it could become problematic with a subordinate investigating a superior officer. But in reality, the superior officers are probably not going to be involved in employee misconduct. If they are, the simple remedy is to outsource that investigation to a private investigator that hand, that works through employee misconduct investigations. That way, you, the investigator is working at the auspices of the police chief, and there's no subordinate doing an investigation on a superior officer.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Blitzer and then Mr. Helen.
Yeah, Chief Jundinger, I'd like to ask just a couple of questions. The civilianization of the departments. I get stuff like property, you know, you don't want to train police officer, not that they're wasting their time there, but you'd rather have them on the street or doing police, you know, police jobs. I get that. But the accreditation manager, you know, why a civilian for that position? And the reason why I say it is, I know they started a new board, a civilian board that oversees police activities, post, and, you know, talking to the officers. And, you know, we're in negotiations now, collective bargaining. And one of the big things is that civilian board. And I get the feeling, and I don't blame them. They don't feel like it's being supervised or being overseen by folks that possibly have never been in the, in the police, in law enforcement. It'd be like having a medical board with no doctors on it, I guess. So I would think that the accreditation manager should be somebody with a law enforcement background. And if I'm wrong, could you tell me, tell me your reasons why a civilian?
Well, the accreditation manager is basically ensuring that they have all of the documentation, processes are being followed, and that they've collected everything that's required for the assessors that do the accreditation. Now, what you're talking about of supervising maybe a civilian board, that's a whole nother thing that, you know, my experience, I believe that more civilian review boards need people with some type of law enforcement experience to understand how police officers operate. But as far as just the accreditation, it doesn't require anyone with any police knowledge because all they, all they're doing is ensuring that things are collected to meet the requirements of the accreditation. Now, a lot of times, the accreditation manager has to go to superior officers in the organization to get data or things that they need. But my, for my organization, I had a civilian accreditation manager, and I just ensured that my executive-level officers understood that when my accreditation manager came to them and needed things, that they were to provide it. That accreditation was important to me and important to the organization and important to the community. So as far as just the accreditation part, it could be done by a civilian. Now, as far as the civilian review board or whatever it is, I don't know enough about that in your town to know if that needs a law enforcement person.
So that accreditation manager could be somebody from Human Resources, possibly to make sure that they have all the accreditation. Because that's basically, I understand why, you know, the training, it's all liability, make sure the officer's trained in case they get into a situation where there's a lawsuit. And I get that we want to have trained officers on the street. That's one of the, that's one of the big reasons for it. Anyway, you answered that. The next question I have is, what's your opinion on body cams and the officers? Because that's obviously another controversial issue, too. What's your, what's your opinion on that?
Well, I guess I can say I implemented them in two of the organizations where I was the police chief, and I think I could probably safely say that over 90% of the law enforcement organizations in the United organizations in the United States are now using body worn cameras.
Do you think it's, you think it's more of a benefit for the officers or for the general public?
I think it's both. It holds both accountable.
I agree. So anyway, okay, thank you. And the last thing is, Chief, I want to commend you on the clinician program. I knew when you started it that it was going to be a great program to hear from a consultant from, from California say that it's, you know, that it's a best, it's been recognized as a best practice. That's really something, and to call it unique. So you should be proud of implementing that and, and the success that that's had. And I, I, I don't see, if, like I said, it's dollars and cents, but any department that can afford, can afford to have that, that position, it's, it's invaluable. It really is. So anyway.
Well, thank you very much.
Kudos to you, Chief.
I couldn't do it without the men and women who were involved in the program and, and the apps. I could not do it without the child and family services.
Mr. Helm?
This question, I guess, would be for both of the chiefs. Under operations, you suggest, one of the suggestions is reallocating four officers and one sergeant from patrol to create a full-time traffic unit. I think you did, Chief Junginger, you did correctly identify that as a, a traffic and traffic violations as a, as a primary concern of residents, and I think that Plymouth lives right up to that. It's speeding, illegal vehicular noise, and illegal behaviors are pernicious in our town. So I guess Chief Flynn, when you, when you see that, how do you conceptualize that? What areas do you think that this would help improve? Our responses focus our responses, and Chief Junginger, if you want to jump in with any thoughts along that?
Well, we're already in the process of coming up with some of the, the basics of starting this, this traffic unit. We hope to have it up and running by, by midsummer. We have to get the right people in there. We have to get the right policy, the right direction for them, but we hope to have it up and running very, very soon.
Would they be out and about? Would they be ticketing people who have put illegal pipes on their pickup trucks or on their motorcycles?
That'd be part of their duties.
That'd be part of it?
Yep. And my goal, my hope is that it's an autonomous unit, who the supervisor runs as they see fit, the hours that they see fit, the locations they see fit. My hope is that they will be, that unit will be pretty much the reception area for complaints in review of reports with the assistance of, assistance of the crime analysts that I'm hoping to obtain as well, and let them run with it.
So you see them as being flexible to allocate themselves into certain areas if you're receiving a lot of complaints from a certain area?
That's my goal and hope.
Excellent. Thank you very much, Chief.
Any other questions or comments from the board? Mr. Mahoney?
Chief Flynn, so I think the report just reinforced what you've brought to our attention in the last few months, is that your current infrastructure, you know, department headquarters is inadequate?
I didn't want to be that guy, but I know that we, the town has done a lot already to improve a lot on a lot of its facilities. I'm looking, not looking for facility right at this moment, but as, as Craig said, I think it's something we need to plan for and start looking, looking ahead.
In really?
Whether expanding what we have or finding another location.
In six to 10 years?
Yes.
Not two to four, but at least put a plan together and know what we're up against heading moving forward.
I would be going, yes.
And just out of curiosity, if that building had to be built today, do you know how many incremental squiff feet that you would, in a perfect world, want?
I don't have that data for you.
Okay, all right. No problem, Chief. Thank you.
Mr. Blitzer?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, my, my questions just have to do with Chief Flynn. I don't know if Chief Junginger wants to stick around, but I, this is for Chief Flynn, some questions, not to do with the study, but I don't know if I should say that for, for new business or talk about now, some of the problems we're facing in Plymouth.
I can, I can wait if, if you want to finish up this portion.
Yeah, I'd like to, so we get the chief, he's out in California, so we can zoom him home. But, so I'll wait till public, till new business. So anyway.
No other questions or comments from the board?
Thank you, Chief, and thank you also.
Thank you.
Thank you, Craig.
Thank you, and we, all of, all of the people involved in the program from the police department were very accessible to us, provided us what we needed, and our team members enjoyed spending three or four days in your community. So thank you very much.
Thank you again. Thank you, Chief.
Anyone wishing to speak on the public comment? Ms. Westgate, anybody online? No? Okay, town managers' report, please.
All right. So I got just a few more updates. There's mostly DPW updates. So I mentioned a couple of weeks back, the Water Street project continues to move forward very well. We're hoping that we will be, you know, off the streets sometime in early to mid-June. But the most current update on the interceptor project is that there's about 300 feet remaining, and that's the pair, that's the section of road from Brewster Street to the DCI restrooms. Starting next Monday, so April 8th, that section of road will be closed, and that's going to be closed for about six weeks. The DPW staff have already notified all the abuddhas, going door knocking, door to door. A detour plan has been put on the town website, so folks are aware, and message boards will be deployed as well. The area in front of the old Isaacs Building will be reopened for parking, so we are providing some relief as soon as possible to the businesses down there. So we're hoping, starting next week, we get about six more weeks of construction work, and then after that, we'll move forward and put the road back together in preparation for the summer. The assistant town manager and I, we had the opportunity this afternoon to go around to look at some of the other projects that are either still under construction but have been completed. And you may have noticed the Brewster Garden stairs are now open over on the Main Street Extension, so great work by Nick Fiala and the DPW to complete that project on time and under budget. In addition to that, the town boat ramp is about, I would say, probably 75% complete. The, if you go down there, you'll notice that there are green piles are now in place, and the concrete floats are also in place. You will also notice that the, what is known as the zone of reconfiguration, looks very different with the floats that are now in place. So that project should be done in the next couple of weeks, and then they'll, then they'll go ahead and start working on the, the walkway around the lobster hut. One piece I really want to talk a lot about, just because, as you know, we've been doing a lot of planning work, massive planning work in a lot of different areas. The most recent one, the DPW director brought to my attention today, is what is known as the comprehensive wastewater management plan. So in theory, this is a master plan for our sewer projects for the next 20 years. This, this, that we have a comprehensive wastewater management plan already, but it's about 20 years old, so we're updating the existing plan. And this plan will cover everything from potential sewer extension projects because of potential developments. It will look at potential satellite treatment facilities in different parts of town. And then ultimately, it will decide where septic systems will probably forever be, given the new DEP regulations and these nitrogen-reducing systems that are now required in the, down at Cape, and we know at some point in the future, they will be required here in the town of Plymouth as well. So the, the DPW has been engaging the engineering from Weston and Sampson since December. So you're going to hear a lot about that in the community moving forward of this comprehensive wastewater management plan, which is very different than the EE&amp;F program we've talked about in the past. And the last thing I just want to mention, that we are halfway through the management pressure zone upgrades. So the water lines on White Horse Road have been complete. For those of you that live in that area, you'll notice that there's still some construction on White Horse Road. Those are to replace the domestic lines that tie into each home. And then in the next couple of weeks, the DPW will start the water main replacement project over at Manament, Manament Point Road. And so that project will take a few weeks. They are expecting to be done with that project well before the summer months begin. Pending any questions, that's all I have for this evening.
Mr. Helm?
On the comprehensive wastewater plan that you're developing, given what the state, you mentioned what the state DEP is doing and what is coming down the pike in terms of, of the nitrogen-reducing septic systems, will our Director of Health Department be involved in this? Because I know of no one who's more knowledgeable about what the state is planning to do to us in less than 10 years around this. I was happy to hear you mention satellite sewer treatment areas. That's, that was music to my ears. But I do know that Director Keen is one of the most knowledgeable people around in what they're planning to do and would serve as good advice to whatever the DPW is thinking.
Yeah, I think that's a great recommendation. I'll certainly follow up with both Ms. Keen and our DPW director to make sure that takes place.
Thank you.
Any other questions for the town manager? Comments? See you none. Moving on to new business. Mr. Mahoney?
So I, I attended my first harbor committee as the select board liaison a couple of weeks ago, and it was roughly two hour meeting, but the big takeaway was that they want to make sure that they have a seat at the table with respect to the Citizens Advisory Committee that we're about to put together, talking about, you know, the wastewater that comes out of the plant and potentially, obviously diverting more of that into the beds. So I don't know how we're going to, you know, I think we agreed to a seven-member committee, but they just want to make sure that they get a slot on that.
They have somebody on there?
You got it.
Okay. Duly noted. Correct, Mr. Assistant Manager?
Thank you.
Mr. Blitzer?
I have a couple of questions for the chief. Chief Flynn. Hi, Chief, how you doing?
I'm doing fine.
As I, we had a conversation by text last week. I got a couple of calls about an article, an article that come out the independent about the violence in our downtown from a couple of bars. And that, I read, I read the article, and it was very negative about our downtown. It's, 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 everything we're trying to do, the town manager, since he got here, has been trying to help revitalize the downtown, and the board is all in favor of doing that. This negative press does not help us. So I was wondering, do we have a plan to, you know, I mean, we have a license boards, and we, I, I think that we have to know about any incident that has, that happens in these, in any license, license premise, we have to know about that. And at some point, I think that we, they have to be made accountable, we have to bring them before us, we have to, there have to be some ramifications if, if they're repeat violators. And, you know, I don't want to, last thing I want to do is hurt anybody's business, but, you know, having a liquor license is, is a privilege, and it's, it's, it's not any different than having a driver's license. It, if you, if you violate it, if, you know, you could lose that license. And for them, if they lose their license, they lose their business. So I don't want that happening, and this is not being threatening, but I think we have to control the negative activities, the fights, vomiting on the sidewalks. And this is, I got a call from a business person who owns properties down there, very, very upset about what we're going to do about it. And, you know, he says, and he's right. Sunday, I was walking Easter Sunday at nine o'clock in the morning. I was downtown, one door down from, from a license holder, and I, there was throw up all over the sidewalk. And, you know, my thing is, is I ran, I've been, I've been either, either managing or own restaurants and bars for 50 years. And, you know, I used to manage right in downtown Plymouth, there was a place before I was at the waterfront. And at the end of the night, we swept the sidewalk, you know, if you saw anything like that, you cleaned the sidewalk, you know, because we are a tourist town. You know, the, the employees have to be better trained, the managers, you know, have to, they have to be aware of what's going on. And believe me, I know things happen, you can't control some things when, when it comes to alcohol, no matter how good you are, but it's what you do after something happens. It's how you handle it after it happens. So I don't know if we could set up maybe another meeting? We had it with the ABC, I believe it was last year or the year before, all the license holders in a room, get somebody from the ABC, have somebody from your department. I would speak myself and talk about the responsibility of having a license and what, what you have to do, and, you know, the training that you need to have. You need to have, you know, employees that are paying attention. There should be no drinking, and I'm not saying people allow that, but no employee should be drinking on duty. They should be aware of what's going on, and, you know, if they have to call, they should call the police to intervene, get medical attention for somebody if they need it, and just police, not just inside, but outside of your, your facility. So, and then we, I think we have to come up with a plan that if there are violations, whether it's underage drinking, whether it's over serving, or whether it's lack of security, we, we need to, we need to, there needs to be some kind of, you know, some kind of ramification for that, and there should be some enforcement too. So an idea I had, and I don't, I don't know if you, if you are considering this, is maybe at least on the weekends, having a couple of extra officers detailed during the peak hours, maybe 10 to 2, 11 to 2, something like that, have a couple of officers right in that, in, in the downtown, in that area downtown. And if there's problems in the waterfront, if that happens too, then we do the same thing down there. But at least, you know, at least, I know we have walking beats, but maybe we need something like that at night too, at least in, in the problem areas. So again, we, you know, we need to, the, the bars and restaurants are the backbone of our downtown, and if, if it gets out of control, they could destroy the downtown. So I'd like to hear any, if you give me comments on what I just said. Thank you.
As I, as we spoke last week, as you said, and I'd spoken to the town manager previously, I've actually been in the process of drafting a memo for the board regarding some of my concerns and some of my thoughts and ideas down there. I had hoped to have it ready for this meeting. Unfortunately, I had some personnel issues last week that I had to address, and I'm hoping to have that for you within the next couple of weeks. The location we're talking about now has been a problem since I was a patrolman. We did at that time when it first came on, and we still do, when the midnight shift finishes roll call, that's where they go. If, if you drove through, through the center of town, 11:30 midnight, you'd see three, four, five, six officers hanging out, if you will. What we're finding is issues that may be developing inside some of these establishments are not being reported until it spills out on the street, then it becomes our problem. We have also been in contact with some of the state regulatory agencies. They've been very proactive down here, and I'm hoping to be speaking with them at a chief's meeting again next Wednesday to see what, what they've been finding. But we were talking about it today, and one of the regulatory agencies, they were in downtown last weekend. So we know what you're talking about. As I said, I am working on a draft memo for you, and I hope to have it to you shortly.
So I'd like to say too, this isn't all negative, because we have a lot of great operators in the downtown, downtown. operators in the downtown waterfront area of our restaurants, so we just want everybody playing by the same rules and, you know, protect our businesses. I can tell you, in Boston, every time the police get called, you go before the license board. Every time there's a fight, if you don't call the police and there's a fight and they don't get called, you go before the license board. That's even worse. So, they're very, of course, they have a full-time board there, and that's what they do, but they take violations very serious. And I don't want it to get to this becomes a police state, where we're going around looking for violations, looking. I just, you know, I want to get together with these license holders and tell them, they control what happens in their premises. They control it. They control the people that work for them, and, you know, so it's up to them to take the responsibility to take care of inside and outside of their premises. You know, it's very important, and there's things that go on that have been going on for years, like seeing on Channel 5 drinks being served on the Thanksgiving Parade on the street. That's a violation. That's a license loss. That's a suspension of a license in Boston for a period of time. That's illegally serving alcohol. And there's businesses that have flaunted that. And the other businesses that do it the right way, that don't do things like that, they get very upset with that activity. So, this is something, it's just April now, we're going into our busy season. I think it's something we should try and nip in the bud as soon as possible. So, anyway, thank you.
Welcome. Anything else on the new business?
I have a couple things. Silvio, I'd like to start by saying I wish Ginny Flynn the best. I'd be foolish to say that I'm going to miss her. I enjoyed working with her. She was easy for me to work with. That being said, as we move forward, we seem to be going through executive secretaries, if you will, quite a few. In my tenure, I've never seen the turnover that I've seen in that position. So, I am very much interested in sitting on the review committee, and if another member on this board wants to join me, I recommend it, that we sit in on these interviews and make sure we get somebody that's going to fit the bill, and what their expectations are, and what our expectations are. However, if it wasn't for the situations that I've been seeing, I wouldn't even bring this up. But due to that, and my concern, I'm going to ask that we do that. Second, I asked the town manager several weeks ago, and I would say it to him, but I know he's at a precinct, that I'd like to work on an express building permit for Plymouth, and I'm not, I know we have one, and I'm not talking about for decks. I'm actually talking about, and I don't know if this is the right number, 9,000 to 10,000 square foot buildings, in order to get economic development moving in the right directions, because when people start opening their tax bills, they're going to understand exactly what I'm speaking to. And I'm going to do a presentation on what the commercial tax base is in this town, and we've seen parts of it, and what it means to the taxpayer if we pull that out of there. And it's up to the people in the community to decide, but the long story short of it is I'm going to reach out to some members, and I'm going to bring it back to the board. We'll have a discussion, do a docket item, or anybody that has anything to say at that time, put it together, but we need to do something. And my last one is this, we have assessment in police, I've seen it done in DPW, can we do an assessment of this building and how every department's operating? Is there such a thing? Because I definitely would like to, I haven't seen one in a while, and I'd like to see that.
Absolutely. So...
Or at least a presentation on it, so the board can have a discussion and talk about it.
Absolutely. Interestingly enough, that was a conversation I was having with the HR Director this morning in regards to not just what we've done in the past, which is a class and comp study to understand compensation. I think we have to look beyond that, and what are the needs of the town? The needs of the town maybe 20 years ago, or 15 years ago, or however long all of the positions that are currently now were created may have changed. So, I feel like one of the things we should look at as an organization is what our staffing needs, not necessarily when it comes to numbers of staff, but the functions that they perform. So, that's interesting enough that you're saying that, because we were talking about it internally already. So, thank you. I'll definitely have an answer for those questions.
So, they definitely do that, I'm assuming, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, if you guys can bring that back to us in the near future? Any other new business letters? Old business? Motion?
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second? One in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. See you next week.